So, good evening. I would like to call the Monday, July 11th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. First up would be the Pledge of Allegiance. So, if we can all stand and face the flag and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, if we could just have a roll call to confirm who is in attendance this evening, please?
Board Member Seer.
Here.
Board Member Krug.
Here.
Chair McAlpine.
Here.
Board Member Riley.
Nope, he's gone.
Oh, that's, it's wrong on there, so.
Okay.
Ah, Board Member McDonald.
Here.
Board Member Yuler.
Here.
Board Member Ward.
Here.
Board Member Willner.
Here.
So, we do have a quorum, so we will proceed with everything that has been presented. In front of us also is the agenda for this evening. There are copies up front if you do not have one, and our copies were sent in the packet. So, we will, we are going to make a little bit of a change process-wise. I've been told that we do not need to take a roll call vote for everything. We can just do a roll call vote for the quorum, the agenda, the minutes, old business and things like that. So, we're gonna start that process. I don't know if anyone has any objections? So, I know it's something that Kristen had said the Planning Commission started to do, and since it's not required, we will follow suit. So, if everyone's had a chance to approve the minutes, I mean, I'm sorry, approve the agenda, we will take a motion and a support to approve the agenda, and then we will do the voice call for approval.
I'll move that we accept the agenda as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, we are, we will proceed. Next up, we have the meeting minutes from our meeting on June 13th, 2022. Once again, those were in our packets. If there are any revisions, additions that need to be made, we can discuss those now. If not, we will go ahead and take a motion to approve the minutes and a support, and then we will do a voice call vote for that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to approving the minutes?
I think I have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. So, we still have six, so we are good. Is there, and it does not appear that we have any old business, so we will move on. The first application before us this evening is Application PBA 722, located at 3376 12 Mile Road. They are requesting a use variance to use the property and structure as a duplex. The petitioner is Gary William Foster, who is the owner of 3376 parcel 042507451041 on the north side of 12 Mile between Buckingham and Tyler. He is requesting a variance in order to use the property structure as a duplex. Okay, so, you wanna fill us in?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In the review that was dated July 7th, you'll see on the first and second page are listed all the uses and permitted uses and special uses in the 12 Mile District. I'm not gonna go over those. I just wanna point out that Item M is apartments or townhouses, and so that is a residential use that's allowed primarily on the first floor. And I bring that up because that's critical to what you're talking about in terms of going from apartments to allowing a duplex. Then, the surrounding property is almost all zoned 12 Mile, except to the north where it's zoned parking district. Something to keep in mind, though, is that on this site, there are five parking spaces that are within the property and directly associated with the building. So, there's three, three outdoor spaces that are in the driveway that's right next door to the building, and then there's two within an attached garage. And that comes into some of the special circumstances that you may look at in terms of whether you choose to grant the used variance or not. This site has been known for decades as Jerry's TV. It was a TV shop, but the owner and his family lived there, and it was a live-work unit. The city records go back to 1963 when a garage was attached. In 1971, the Zoning Board of Appeals then granted a variance for the business portion of the structure to expand. At that point in time, it was zoned to be two, and it didn't allow residential uses at all, so they needed that in order to even expand the commercial part of the building. It was found at that time. In 2021, the current property owner took interest, I guess you could say, in the property and took over the property via land contract. At that point in time, he talked to Director Schluto, who instructed him that if he wanted to use it as a residential use, that it needed to have three units, because the zoning, as you saw when you reviewed the letter, only allowed apartments or townhouses. And when you dig a little further into those definitions, which were in our review, you'll see that it defined those as three units or more, both townhouses and apartments. In February, the applicant submitted building permits to create those three dwelling units. They went through their usual review. They go through the Community Development Director's office. I cited that they didn't comply with the 12 Mile design standards, and Fire Inspector Pete Kelly brought up the fire separation issues that are required for a commercial residential use, which is three units or greater. The applicant did revise and resubmit plans where the, in terms of the community development issues, meaning the zoning and the design standards, were complied with. However, the fire separation, he couldn't do due to expense and also due to the structure itself. So, myself, the building official, and the fire inspector all met on site, and really what it boiled down to was, when you go from two units to three units, the fire code and the building code require fire separation that in this structure would be very expensive due to the two stories and the way the structure was art, is built. So, at that meeting, I advised the applicant that maybe pursuing a use variance would be a way forward. So, with that as context, I would go through, I wanna just, again, highlight for you your standards for review. This is a use variance, so I know you haven't seen one of these since, I think, February?
December.
Janu- January? Yeah. So, just, they're a little different than your usual five. So, the building or land cannot be reasonably used for the uses permitted by right or special use in the current zoning district. And as I mentioned, the applicant, and in their application, the applicant says the variance is due to, because the expensive fire sprinklers and the fire separation for three units. And while the residential use is permitted by right may be unreasonable, the board should discuss whether conversion of the entire building to non-residential uses allowed in the 12 Mile District is unreasonable. The building is quite large, also compared to its neighbors, and the existing layout is for a live-work unit with residential use on the first floor. And also, all the kitchen facilities are on the first floor. There's two floors, but when you look at the plans, you'll see that for the unit in the back, there's a kitchen, and then stairs going up to two bedrooms. And then for the other unit where they're really converting what used to be the, what used to be the television shop, repair shop, that is going, what they wanna do is make it a duplex. Then, what are, of course, you need to have unique circumstances or physical conditions. Again, this structure has always been a live-work unit, and with residential uses on the first floor. It's larger than the other structures on the block. Also, in terms of why it couldn't necessarily be three units, is there's five parking spaces associated with this property. The zoning ordinance says that for residential uses, all the parking needs to be on-site, associated with the parcel. So, if this was a commercial use, the parking would be waived because they have bought a public parking, a public parking lot. However, because they're proposing residential uses, that's not the same. So, if they had six, if they had three units, they would really need six parking spaces, which they don't have. So, that's another unique circumstance that you could take into mind. The proposed use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood is your third standard. We really don't feel that it would alter the essential character. They're proposing to bring the facade into compliance with the zoning ordinance and those standards, which is key to getting the intended character of that part of 12 Mile. Also, they have office uses on either side, so it's not as if this is in the middle of your restaurant district along 12 Mile. Also, the need for the variance is not the result of actions of property owners or previous property owners. In part, the need for this is due to their choices. They could convert the entire building into commercial. But, again, office use, again, the structure was originally built and expanded with that first-floor residential component, and that's been inherited by the current property owner. So, we just ask that whatever decision you make, you make findings, and that it's based on the standards of Section 138 606 of the zoning, of the zoning ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Ms. Ward?
I have a question. I always thought we had five standards, and I only see four standards.
You have five standards for a dimensional variance. You have four standards for a use
variance. Use variance, okay, thank you. And secondly, the parking area to the north, that is general parking, correct?
That's a municipally-owned lot.
It's a municipally-owned lot, okay. And they get three spots out of that?
No.
No?
No, if you look at their site plan, they have two spots that are in the garage, and then the garage juts out. There are three spots in that concrete apron that are right there.
Oh, okay.
So, and again, as I said before, the zoning ordinance wouldn't allow them to use that public parking as their required spots, the way that it's currently worded.
It could if they were commercial, right?
If they were commercial, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have one question. There's, there's stuff in the application about the ordinance changing. Is that true?
The ordinance has changed over the years, so I think.
But it's more, it's more we're here with the need for this because the, like, there was a period of, I mean, that's not really the reason of the need for the variance, correct? Okay.
Okay, seeing as there's no other questions, if we could have the petitioner come up and state their name and address for the record, and then just tell us a little bit about what you wanna do and why you would like to do it.
Sure. Gary Foster, 3376 12 Mile Road, proud to be in Berkeley, Michigan. I think Megan pretty well summed it up. She stole all my thunder. I don't know that I could do a better job than she did. I think she illustrated all the points that I was going to make, probably much more eloquently. We could go through the slides, and I could answer any questions that somebody has, but I think she was on point with all of her dates and findings and the fact that we met on site. We did a walkthrough, exploring a way forward, and the best we could come up with was to throw myself at your mercy.
All right, well, we will, we will be kind, hopefully.
You know, and before we get too far into it, I just wanted to stop and thank each of you for taking time out. I know this is a voluntary position, and there's Netflix and dinners and a million other things you guys could be doing, so I want you to know, I appreciate that, whether you said yes or no.
Well, thank you. All right, so if you wanna walk through, I think, walk through the slides. So, obviously, the first picture is what the property looks like today.
No, that's what it looked like when, when I purchased it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry.
That's what it looks like today with your sign on the front.
For some reason, I remember the old picture.
And that's what it looked like before, and that's what it looks like now. That was before, 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 and before. I will say, when we decided to buy this, we were shopping around, looking for reasonable housing in Berkeley. My wife and I, we were in an apartment. We used to live in Berkeley. We moved out of town. We desperately wanted to get back to Berkeley. We're looking for housing here to accommodate our, our family. They're with me. My son is anyways. He was one that helped me with most of the work. We're builders. And what was unique about this, we, when looking it up, I, the listing said that it was apartments and residential. And being a commercial building, it didn't make a lot of sense to me, so I did go to Oakland County to confirm that, that it was listed as commercial or as apartments and residential. And, you know, my wife and I discussed it, and it was a complete disaster. You can imagine what it, if you see the outside of the building, the inside of the building was in about the same condition. I think we took out five dumpsters full of debris, just couches and, and stuff of living for 40 years, plus the remnants of Jerry's TV business. The courtyard was so overgrown, you couldn't see through it. I know you guys don't know that there's a courtyard there, but there's actually a courtyard if you saw the site plan. And we'll get to some pictures, but this was us going through, replacing a bunch of rotted wood, changing windows, which incidentally, we pulled the necessary permits for, painted the complete building, exterior, interior. Even though we knew the front facade would have to change, I couldn't leave it in that condition. I was embarrassed to own it. So, whatever it is that you guys allow me to do, I promise you that it'll only be an improvement on the, on that, in that district. So, that's what we have today.
Wow.
We poured new exposed aggregates, painted everything, and again, replaced all of the wood. And just some slides through the holidays. And that's what it is today. And unfortunately, I did not take any photos before photos of the interior. I did take some photographs after, just illustrating the, I think in the next slide, it shows the two apartment doors. There you go. So, the garage, the beige door to your far right, that is how you would come through the garage, 'cause it's attached to that courtyard. And then you can see just a little sliver of the white door. That's where Megan mentioned the three open parking spaces that are in the apron. So, you would have to go through that courtyard door to come into the two doors. The door with the star is the door where I live. The other door would be Unit Two. And then I'm just taking pictures of, there's like, two furnaces, they look alike, but they're labeled one and two. They're different. There's the two central air conditioning units. And then I think I just got a couple of photographs of, of the two different kitchens.
I did not get the kitchens.
Oh, you didn't get the kitchens, okay. There's two kitchens.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Foster?
So, I have a question. So, your intent when you purchased it was to move in and?
Yeah, absolutely.
And have it as a live-work?
As a duplex, yes. We weren't sure what we could do with the third, with the front unit on 12 Mile. That's why we met last July with Erin for some direction there. And that's when she said, oh, you're gonna have to build a third unit to comply with the current ordinance. And we reached out to Joe at JIS on architecture and began some renderings and opened up a dialogue with the city. Yes, the intent was we would move into one side. My oldest daughter, real proud, she just finished nursing school and took a job at Beaumont Royal Oak. So, we're thinking maybe she would take the other unit, because we're running out of elbow room, the one unit that we're currently occupying is actually a little bit smaller than the Unit Two.
Mr. Yuler, I believe you had a question?
Yeah, I have to ask, since it's in here, what is the cost difference to make it a three-bedroom with the fire separation?
What would the cost be?
Correct.
They said it wasn't, it would probably be impossible. It'd be cheaper to knock the building down and start over.
Okay.
That was with the building official, the fire inspector, and the architect.
So, with two units, you don't need a fire separation, correct? It's residential code.
It's residential code, correct.
Okay, are there any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you very much. So, at this point, I will open it up to anyone from the public who wishes to speak. If you do, if you would please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record as well, and tell us, give us your thoughts. Okay. There is no one from the audience. We did have two letters that were added to our packet. One is from the Michigan Dyslexia Institute, and it said that basically Gary and his family have been great neighbors, and they support his request to use the property and structure as a duplex. And that was from Kathy Jones, the Center Director. And then the other one was from MPH Marketing Solutions. And Kevin Sodway stated that he is confident that Gary will maintain his property and that it will be an asset to Berkeley and protect local property values. So, that is all we had unless there was any more than.
There was a third one or something, wasn't there? But it was just like a, he wrote on the.
Oh, I did not see it, I'm sorry.
There was a third one from Mr. Ossberger. He just wrote on the, and this was scanned.
I did not see that, I apologize.
He also said he had no objections.
Okay, so there was obviously now three letters from the, from the surrounding residents that would approve this. So, at this point, I will close the public hearing and open it back up to us for discussion and consideration for the variance request. Who would like to start us off? Ms. Air?
I'll just say, seeing the plans and the changes, I do feel it's a good use of the property. Although it's not three, I do feel like it's, and it's due to the owner's changes, I do think it's a good use of that current property, and it would be cost prohibitive for, or impossible for him to make it a three-unit facility or building, so.
So, the use variance that we're voting on is allowing a duplex when it should be technically apartment or townhouse, which those are considered three, three units?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Ms. Ward?
I'm conflicted about this request. One of the things that we do here with the Zoning Board of Appeals is that if there is a problem with the land or a hardship with the land or the property, that usually, in, in like 99% of instances, a variance is granted. If you look at Item Number D, it indicates that the variance is requested, and it's due in part to the property owner's choice to use the building for solely residential purposes. So, to me, I'm hard-pressed to find a hardship of why we should grant the variance. And if there are, my fellow board members would like to point out someplace where there is a hardship that I can look at it, I'm more than happy to do that.
So, yeah, so I will say, it is, it is zoned for apartments and townhouses, so that is strictly residential use.
Right.
And, you know, to me, I guess the hardship, and those are considered three units. The hardship is that it's not cost-effective to make it three units. So, it's still being used residential, two units instead of three. Really, the only difference is it's one unit less.
Yeah.
I mean.
Which they would, if they were doing three, they'd still be in front of us because they would have a parking issue.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Yuler?
If, if this was, like, would, would the applicant have variance if he was just trying to open, like, you know, Jerry's TV Two, or, you know?
Actually, he would, because this property has first-floor residential. And what the zoning ordinance says is retail, retail and office uses of all types, but for residential uses, it says upper-story residential, apartments, or townhouses. So, the fact that this had, they would probably be, if they were doing, it doesn't have a live-work unit. It just says upper-story residential. So, the fact that the kitchen is downstairs and the bathroom facilities were downstairs, and the way that Jerry's TV was originally built, from what I understand from Pete Kelly, the fire inspector, was that actually, they expanded the television repair shop up, and it was always a lower-story apartment. So, it doesn't, this is, this building is very much a, almost like a star-shaped peg, and there's not a lot of round holes in the zoning.
How did Jerry's TV, did they have a variance? Is that what it said?
Yes, they had a variance in 1971, I think.
Yeah, I think it started in 70.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, and, and originally built, I think, in the 1960s.
I don't know if this is just overly creative, but my thought as to how you could try to make an argument to meet the fourth one is, I mean, that kinda, mom and pop fix your TV out of your house, you know, it's 1950s. It just doesn't exist anymore, those kinds of, I mean, I suppose, like, was there stuff in here about an art studio or something?
No, that's the next one.
Oh, okay.
Do you believe the applicant will have a home office?
Okay. So, that's like, yeah, I, I mean, I was kinda concerned too about, you know, whenever we have costs, we're not supposed to consider costs. You see costs in the application, it's kinda like, uh-oh, you know, we're not supposed to, even if it's like $20,000 or whatever, we're not supposed to say, you know, the cost isn't supposed to be the hardship. So, I don't know. I, I guess I'm talking in circles, but my thought is just, just that kinda business model, the fact that the whole building's been built on this, like, almost like 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, repair-your-TV kinda thing, I just don't think that's viable anymore.
Mr. Yuler? Jerry Voight used to come to our house to fix my parents' TV.
I'm not knocking the man. I don't, I've met him.
No, no. He was, it was usually a tube, and he was very good at, he would have tubes in his case, and he would, oh, here's the bad one, and he'd put a new one in. He never had to take our TV into his shop.
Okay.
But there were other people whose TV, because of the, the large tubes, he did have to take to his shop. So, it was, you know, a very, as you say, interesting model because of the fact that you had somebody fixing a TV, whereas today, you just throw the TV out and you get a new one.
It's, I mean, it just seems like one of those situations. Obviously, it's great that's there. It's better than what it was. We want that kinda thing on 12 Mile, but it's trying to fit it within the, the rules and the things we have to follow.
Yes.
Yes.
To summarize what Board Member Yuler was saying, I think you could find that this is a unique building, and the adaptive reuse is a challenge, and that would be one of the findings for a use variance.
And act, and actually, this use is closest to what it has been, more than anything else. I mean, it's not, I mean, that, they're just using, they've got the model. I mean, two air conditioners, two electrical units, two kitchens, much like that one house we talked about before, a couple months, several months ago. I mean, part of it is already here.
So, if it doesn't get approved, then what happens with the rest of the building? It just sits there? It can't be used for, unless, unless, he, he couldn't even open a store in there, right? Because it doesn't meet the new.
We'd have to find another, another solution, yeah.
I mean, to me, it seems crazy, but.
I mean, that, that could be the other unique circum, I mean, there's no other.
Yeah, that sounds like hardship to me.
Well, my only other comment on, I'm a little bothered by, you know, this is kind of, it's almost one of the situations where, you know, a lot of work's been done, and it's almost like the variance is getting asked for after the fact, which is another um, which is another thing that we normally should have a real problem with. I mean, it's like, you know, if you do twenty or thirty grand worth of work before you know you're going to get the variance, then you come in and say it's going to be a hardship if you make me tear it down.
I agree. I mean, so would he be allowed to continue living there if the use variance was not, is a single unit?
Uh-huh. The, the residential use was an existing non-conforming use, so as long as it's been occupied during that time and the use didn't cease, then that could continue. Um, it's just then what happens with the rest of the building.
I got a question. Uh, what, so all this work has been done, there, I mean, obviously permits were already approved, correct? For the work that's being done?
I would, so, I'm going to let the applicant answer that-
Okay.
Because I wasn't the one who signed off on the, uh, uh, on the building permits and where it was. Um, I do know that I reviewed a building permit for it, um, I think, what did I say, back in February? In the letter, and at that point in time, we said to halt because that, we said that you didn't have a building permit because there were facade issues and there was separation issues. I think a lot of the things that they did were things that you didn't necessarily have to pull permits for in terms of replacing rotting wood, things like that, or, or demolition that the city would allow in order to keep a structure sound. Um, but I would ask the applicant more, uh, I, I was not privy to that.
If you would like to come up and just, I'm sorry, explain that, Mr. Foster?
Yeah, no, I, it's my understanding, most of the lifting that we did, there wasn't any permits required. When I did have the onsite meeting with a building official, he indicated that I would need a permit for the window, and then Kim said, "That's strange, if you're just doing a replacement window, you don't need one," but I pulled it nonetheless. Um, the cleanup, the painting, uh, wood repairs, there's not any necessary permits for that. Um, yeah, updating and painting, and it's kind of the tail wagging the dog. The building is ninety-five percent, if you look at the floor plan, it's apartments. It's a, less than, or right about five hundred square feet, that would be the, was the Jerry's TV repair. And my wife and I, and fully intend to use that space as a in-home office. That's why I put live-work on the application, and restore that facade and clean it up, because it is a disaster. Uh, putting in the windows and bringing, like I said, some integrity to that front. So we would still use it as an office space, that front five hundred square feet. And again, besides that, you would knock the building down, there has no other function. I, you, I don't know what kind of business you could get out of two apartments, other than two apartments.
Uh, Mr. Foster, it, um, the office that you would operate would not be open to the public, correct?
I would, not generally, I, I'm a builder, I work out of the house, she works from home, couple days out of the week, um, doing office work. Um, I also, I'm a realtor, there could be times that I would have to have people come in and sign paperwork, stuff like that. But generally speaking, no, we wouldn't be open to the public. The nature of our business wouldn't be people in and out.
But you, you indicated that it was currently its own residential or busi- and business.
Zoned Twelve Mile, which is a mixed-use district.
And that this was already currently being used in that capacity.
It'd been, as Jerry's TV had been used as residential-
So they moved in still using the business part and the residential part, technically.
And the, what they indicated originally to Director Schluto was the intent was to have three apartments, but as they went through the design-build process, it became apparent that to make it three apartments would be cost prohibitive, and also, I, I mean, really, when we met with the building official and, and, and the fire inspector, it's, it would be a matter of tearing out walls and floor choices in order to have that fire separation.
May I ask another question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Foster?
Foster.
Yes, um, was, originally, when you were trying to do the three, you know, go with the ordinance and have three different, uh, residences there, did you make plans for that, like, uh, drafts or, uh?
Yes, there is drafts, and we submitted those drafts.
Okay, so we don't have any of those, though, right here with us, that were-
But I think that's how the whole issue of the firewall came up, so that's why that plan was abandoned, but yes, that was the original intention.
But you were, you were able to create three separate apartments.
We could, but you couldn't provide necessary, uh, fire separation. Forget about cost aside, it, physically, they didn't think it could be done.
Had it been vacant for a while before you got it?
It was, there was food in the refrigerator when I moved in.
So he'd been there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
I think it's hard. I, I'm, I'm inclined to vote for it, just because the unique nature of what Jerry's TV did to the building and how it's not really-
It's not terribly functional.
The description, the, the, the star, star peg into a round hole, that, I don't know if it's overly creative, but I'm inclined to do it, I mean.
To Mr. Euler's, um, that they're, like, they're after the fact, trying to come with a variance after they'd already started that project, but it did, it seems that they were trying to do the three-unit to start with. And then in February, is this correct, that that's when the, the, the problem with the separation and the fire suppression and all that, kind of halted everything that they were already currently in, in process of doing. And then, now that's been halted since February, and now they're at this point?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to get my timeline, okay.
So it sounds like they went in with the right intentions.
Right, I, right, I, I don't s- I don't see, like, there's a, they're trying to-
I wasn't trying to suggest anything nefarious was going on, but I-
Right.
No, and we've had those come in front of us.
I need to hear the timeline in order to understand that.
This kind of, this kind of building with Jerry's TV, you know, it kind of, you could see there being a zoning issue depending on what you were going to do with it, or a, I don't know. It might have been better to, to do this before putting that much work into it, but, whatever.
All right, are we ready for someone to, uh, make a motion? Do we still need some more discussion? Are there any lingering questions that we have that we need to defer to Mr. Foster or Ms. Menachor?
I think, um, some of the issues that have been brought to the table tonight, um, could be used to substantiate a hardship. Um, I think Mr. Willner, uh, brought up a good point. And the fact that there's not a whole lot that can be done with the building in its current state except to create two apartments. Um, otherwise, it would be, um, as Mr. Euler, uh, referenced at the, one of the previous meetings, it would be another empty building in, uh, the city of Berkeley. And so, um, the fact that the Fosters are willing to make some changes, and the master plan does call for this area to be, um, residential, which I found very interesting, I, I, I found that to be very interesting when I read that. Um, I think we can probably come up with a motion to approve, um, uh, part of, where is it? Um, PBA seven, oh-seven dash twenty-two, three-three, seven-six, Twelve Mile Road.
Do you have one more comment? That's all right?
Sure.
Now, a- again, I, I feel like I'm behind the eight ball on timeline and everything, but what, there was a variance in the se- early seventies that allowed them to have the two basically separate living areas or-
It allowed the commercial aspect of the building to expand.
Okay, which, so a variance like that, at that time, is similar to what they're tr- s- trying to do now, just in an improved, more modern-day situation.
Not really, I mean, no, they were had, they had a business and a, uh, live, then.
Living area.
Right, right, but I mean, what the variance-
This is strictly, this is strictly two, two residential units.
Right, but what the variance did was it split the upstairs and downstairs, which they're, right now, it's, was, it would have been only an upstairs living area, but part of that was down?
Yeah.
In the seventies?
In the, there wasn't, there was always a ground-floor component.
Of the living area.
Of the, of the, of the living area, and where it expanded up, that-
That was the business part.
That was the business part that went up. So, by the nature of the building with the first-floor residential use, if this is to be a residential building of any type, um, it doesn't fit the current zoning. Um, because it either asks for three units, um, or, which kicks in the commercial code, or, um, it has a first-floor residential use, which, that it says upper-story residential only if there was a commercial on the down, uh, uh, on the lower floor.
Okay.
Yes.
Answered my question.
So M is apartment or townhouses, and N is dwelling above a business use.
And we also have to look at the fact that if three units were to be put there, they wouldn't have the parking for that.
Right.
There's only five available-
Parking spots.
Another unique circumstance that might make this building different than some other buildings is it's in the middle of the block and it's attached to other buildings. So, if you had to knock this building down-
Is that even possible, or how would you do?
I, and that was, we didn't even get into that when we were onsite.
Dyslexic Institute would not like that, right?
So, it was, it wa- that, that would greatly disrupt the character of the neighborhood. So, um, it would be likely that, you, you know, you wouldn't see a rebuild, you would see a gutting of that, of a building and a rebuilding, or you might see the entire block, um, like Stella's Marketplace, rather than just this one building in the middle. So this location in the middle of the block, attached to other buildings, is also another unique circumstance that you could cite.
And I would like to include that in, in my motion.
All right, we're ready for a motion then, Ms. Ward?
I thought I made it.
Okay, are we good with that?
I, I just need a second.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, okay, so we have a motion for Ms. Ward to approve the application PBA zero-seven-two-two-three-three-seven-six-Twelve Mile Road, a use variance request to use the property structure as a duplex. We have a support for that motion by Mr. Willner. This will require, we will do, um, what, what, the other kind of call?
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry. I totally lost my train of thought, so if you can go ahead and, and start that, please.
All right, um, McDonald.
I approve.
Euler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Eyre?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven, nothing, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. So you guys can get with Megan and the building department and everyone else you need to get with to continue, um, this process.
I still say thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you, Meg.
And, and Kristen.
I did a whole lot for her, but-
It, it was painful, uh, to approve that.
So, next up is application PBA zero-eight dash two-two, uh, the property at three-nine-ten-Eleven Mile Road. This is a use variance request to use the property and structure as a live-work unit. George Benat, uh, is the owner of this property, uh, parcel zero-four-two-five-one-eight-three-five-three-zero-three-one, on the east side of Eleven Mile, between Cummings and Thomas. Um, and once again, he is requesting that, uh, he get a variance to, uh, use this property as a live-work structure. So if you can go ahead and give us the background?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, in our review, July, dated July seventh, you'll see again that, um, all the permitted uses and principal uses are listed. Um, this is a very small property that's on the corner of Eleven Mile and Cummings. Um, there's some unique things about the Eleven Mile District. Um, number one, it says there should be no dwellings, schools, or other trade and industrial schools, hospitals, or institutions for human habitation or care, unless accessory and incidental to permitted pr- principal use, um, rural classes and business uses, except for such uses as convenience of shopping persons in the Eleven Mile District, et cetera. Um, and that's really because in the Eleven Mile District, you allow a lot of industrial uses, and it's not necessarily safe or appropriate for people to be living next door to some of those uses. The applicant, um, has stated verbally in writing, um, that the, oh, also that the Eleven Mile District has some building design requirements. Um, one is specifically that siding generally considered residential regardless of orientation, um, and T one-hundred-and-eleven-type materials shall not be permitted. If you've been by the site, you'll see that it does have residential siding. Um, the applicant has stated verbally in writing that the former community development director, McLean, approved that siding prior to instance installment, but we've got, we have no written record of Mr. McLean's approval. Um, and then on May seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, enforcement complaint was filed, um, that the owner put siding on the existing structure that violated that code that I cited before. Um, this, I had multiple conversations with the property owner, with their real estate, uh, with, with his realtor, um, and really what it boils down to is that this site was used as a retail grocery store with a residential unit for years. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, that use ceased. Mr. Benat bought this building, um, and then it was not reoccupied. Um, so it has been vacant since two thousand and eighteen, so that non-conforming, um, status in terms of use has lapsed. Um, and the owner has been looking for other uses to come in. However, it's a very small site, as you can see, it has very limited parking next door to it, only three to, only three spaces, I believe. Um, and the combination of the s- the, how much the building takes up of the site, the limited parking, and then the limit, the uses of the Eleven Mile District and the parking regulations, I've advised the owner and his real estate agent that when you do the calculations of the square footage, about the only things that would fit in are some sort of office use or an artist's studio. Um, and also keep in mind that next door to it, um, that is where Marijuana Provisioning Center was recently approved, and they just got their, um, approval from city council. I do, I've spoken to both property owners, both of them had talked to each other about combining the two properties, and they were not able to come to an agreement.
Say that again, Megan, please, they were not able to come to an agreement?
They were not able to come to an agreement. Um, so, the standards for this are the same, again, those four, um, that the building or land can't be used, reasonably used for any of the uses permitted by right or specially used in the zoning district. Um, applicant stated that the parking lot won't submit, won't, will not support any of the permitted uses. Um, we feel that it could accommodate an artist's studio or an office use, but in this current market, it could be seen as unreasonable for a building of this size to accommodate those uses, and you're putting them in a very small area. Um, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. Again, the parcel's very small, the building was used as a house and a store, it takes up a lot of the property and there's limited parking. Um, the proposed use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Um, the live-work won't necessarily alter the character of the neighborhood or the area. However, that facade, in my opinion, needs to be brought into compliance. Um, and that, again, that's the difference between this case and the last case, um, in terms of the applicant was saying that they would bring it into compliance with the zoning and the building requirement- and the building requirements, and in this case, um, the applicant hasn't volunteered to do that. Um, but that is something that you could require if you chose to grant, grant the variance. And that the need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner, the previous, uh, previous property owners. Um, it's due in part to the property owner's choice to use the existing building rather than demolish it or build the development in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Again, it's a very small lot, um, so that might be unreasonable, and the building was a nonconforming use from at least nineteen seventy-three, per the city records, until two thousand eighteen. The one thing that we would ask, the, well, there's two things, that if you chose to grant the variance, we'd ask that, um, the following two items be a condition of approval. First, that the facade is brought into compliance with section one thirty-eight dash four nine one C of the zoning ordinance, and that the parking lot is striped in compliance with the zoning ordinance with a barrier free space. And that would be per the building permits that they had submitted previously but never acted upon.
Thank you, anybody have any questions?
I have one, one question, the, um, the eleven mile district, so there, there is no residential
No.
use in the eleven mile district.
No, and it's not intended to be, uh, it's not intended to be that. If you look at the city's master plan, it kind of hints that maybe there, you might look at some uses, residential uses in this area in the future, specifically a live work, um, but that's the master plan, it's not in the zoning.
So when you recommended an art studio, was that an art studio with, with a live in, or?
I would say that in this limited instance, a live work unit, based on what the building was used for before and the uses that are nearby, it could be seen as appropriate to have it as a live work unit. And I, I, I've had several conversations with, again, the real estate agent and the property owner, um, and based on their characterization, and I hope someone's here from them to, to share more, um, that it's been difficult to market this property, and so because you're one unusual in that you allow use variances, this was offered to them as a last resort.
Okay, and Mr. Euler?
So how, from nineteen seventy-three to two thousand eighteen, was there a variance in place, or how was the grocery store getting away with?
It was a nonconforming use, so it'd always been a party store, a grocery store with residential in the back, and...
Like before the ordinance existed?
Yes, before the ordinance existed, so I think that eleven mile district changed, and, and it changed, this building was there before.
Right, but once it went vacant for several years...
That nonconforming status.
You lose that nonconforming status.
So if the applicant had somebody move in right away to that apartment, or within a year, then it could be like the previous case, um, and you can see that that nonconforming use continued. Um, but we have documentation that this, it's been vacant for, since at least, I think...
Twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Ward?
Um, do you know what the living space area is, how many square feet?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and you, uh, Ms. Sarah?
So the intention for this space is that it would be live and work and divided up the same way that it was when the grocery store was there, or is there any kind of plan in place yet for that?
I think, no, the applicant hasn't shared any plans. You could place constraints on that if you wanted, again, there's a limited amount of parking spaces.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, did you have something?
Nope.
Okay, good, I did, you were just looking, okay. All right, um, then we will go ahead and, uh, I believe the petitioner is here.
I'm representing.
Okay, so if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Vince Soprano, I'm from Keller Williams, I am the realtor of the property currently, currently live three one one seven five North River Road in Harrison, Downey.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so a little history on this, Megan has described it perfectly, and, and it's a shame that George did not immediately attack this, and I don't think he actually understood at the time to do it. But since he's done what he has done to it, your question was square footage, living space, about a thousand square feet.
That much, okay.
It's, it's more living space than it actually would be, um, work area. So it's about six hundred square feet of work area. Since it's been listed, we've had zero showings. We've had inquiries on it, and the only inquiries have been knocked down, biggest reason is parking. So being that it has, from what I understand, three allowable parking spaces and some parking on the street, limits what actually could be done as a commercial end of this property. Myself personally, and I know it will never happen, but it, my recommendation totally is, it needs to be a hundred percent residential, and it would be done and over with, and they could make a living room out of the front, and everything would be just fine. It would be not very good looking, but I know there's no residential use in that particular eleven mile district. But to split it would be, give it, um, there would at least be, uh, people that would be interested. And I say that because we sold another property on eleven mile road that was also listed with residential and commercial, and we had so much activity on it. But then it was deemed residential, and therefore that one sold as residential, and that was George's previous property, maybe you don't know it. It's only a half mile this side, right next to Matrix. He had that home, that very, the oldest home in Berkeley.
Berkeley.
And therefore that was allowed to stay as a home, so there is actually residential within six blocks. So myself personally, it should be listed as a residential piece of property, period, because it's really going to be very, very limited to use for commercial and live in. Maybe an art studio, but you're really vague on how many people you'll get of interest to do that. Granted, you'll get a lot more interest, maybe an attorney, maybe, uh, you know, some office, in-house office would be able to work with it and live in it, because I know we had a lot more activity once we listed the other property that way, but then it deemed it had to be residential. It's about really all I can tell you about, he's put a lot of monies into it, uh, and it's been vacant since two thousand eighteen, and I know it doesn't do, um, Berkeley any justice being vacant. Any questions you have that I can try and answer for you? I, I know that he has gone through the motions on getting HVAC approved, he's had whatever work was done to it, electrical's updated, everything else that was required has been done, and I do understand that there's a issue with the vinyl siding on this property, which is something that I wish George sometimes would have at least talked to me about some of the things he was going to do. I've known him for a while, I've worked with him a while, he's a unique individual, but a very big heart. Uh, I don't know what else I really can tell you about, unless you have questions that I can possibly answer for you.
Um, I have...
You can go.
Go, no, go ahead, Mr. Euler.
So it's listed as commercial now, or?
Currently.
And you, you said the only interest you've had have been people who wanted to demolish it?
Oh, I didn't say there was any interest at all, period.
I thought you said for parking.
Well, that was the issue with it, there was no par, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Okay.
The issue that we had as listed as commercial was the limited amount of parking.
Okay.
So therefore, everyone that has inquired on it has walked away from it, because there is no parking to allow for.
Yeah, nobody's looked at it at all, and...
I mean, the highest thing I've got out of it is salons and nails. But again, you need so many per booth and parking spaces for them, and it's just an ideal spot for that. But again, three parking spaces is not going to cover it.
I, I guess I have a question. Um, if we were to, um, put some conditions on approval, if that was the direction it headed, do you have the ability to agree to those conditions on his behalf?
Well, I can't say I can do that, George is out of the country currently, but what I can do is, you know, you put something together and I can get it to him and, and, and go from there. I'm not sure what conditions you might, you guys may have for it, because again, it's about six hundred square feet.
Well, we could, we could require it to comply with the eleven mile facade.
Oh, I don't think that's going to be an issue whatsoever.
Okay, and parking lot.
He knows, he's talked with Megan many a times, I've spoken with her.
I just want to make sure that you...
Absolutely.
Because typically, when, when this happens, the petitioner is there, we say these are the conditions.
I got you.
Would you agree, and the petitioner has to state they will comply.
I think he, he, every time I spoke to him about it, and every time you spoke, she just smiles every time, she, he's a unique individual. He knows that it needs to be changed, and when you say facade, it's basically the front of it, not the side of it.
The whole, siding has to go.
Yeah.
So period.
The front and the side.
The siding completely would have to be changed. I got you. Okay, and, and I, he knows this has to be done, and if he's going to be able to sell this property, and you're going to be able to get, you know, uh, means out of this, then I think he's going to have to do what he's got to do, is change the facade.
So I have one more question, given you're in the real estate business, what is the likelihood that someone wants to live next to a, a medical, or a marijuana dispensary provisioning center?
Great question. Um, I personally, which Megan has suggested, to try and talk to the current marijuana, uh, whatever facility going back up. And there is, it's like oil and water between them two. That isn't going to happen. One thinks it's worth this, the other one thinks he's got problems. So that part ain't going to happen, back to your question. Well, all I can say is the property down the street, six blocks over, is right next to an auto wholesale piece, and it's next to a, I believe it's a woodworking, industrial noises, and, and it's sold.
Much different, hours I would suspect are much different, I don't know, at six o'clock, I'd want all the traffic that you would potentially have as, as a homeowner.
That's a very good point, and I can't answer that, and I would suspect, does the marijuana facility have hours? Is it limited? I don't know that.
Yeah, their, their hours...
Have to comply to...
Their, their hours went until ten o'clock at night typically. Um, I'd have to double check what they said in the site.
I would think even nine o'clock, you'd be like, I don't know if that's what I want. Mr. Euler?
So here's another question, I don't know if you can answer or not, but let, let's say you tear down the building, and you build like a thousand square feet, something, like liquor store or whatever, would you have room for parking and that kind of thing?
No.
You couldn't add more parking spots if you made the building a different size?
Oh, I see what you're saying, make it smaller.
Right.
So instead of sixteen, the problem is the footprint, the footprint's a full basement. I take that back, the six hundred square feet is on a slab. The thousand square feet is on a full basement.
So you could make a thousand square foot business and add parking where the six hundred?
Problem is the six hundred's in front, in other words, on eleven mile road, you guys would never approve of parking to be right. I wouldn't think you would, because we tried to do that with the other one, and they voted it down to put parking in front, because we were going to try and make that commercial. And they said they'll not allow any parking in a, in eleven mile fronting, frontage, and maybe because it was so many feet from the road, I know there was some limitation to it.
There is a setback requirement.
A setback, I think that's what it was.
Um, for this particular building, it would be that it fronts the road, that, that it's a zero foot setback, because I think it's ten, ten feet, I can double check, but I think it's ten feet is the front yard setback, or the average of the buildings that are nearest to it, and as you can see in the aerial that Kristen pulled up, next to it, that building has a zero front setback, so that automatically pulls that building up there, so there is no, um...
You couldn't put three parking spots in front somehow of the buildings?
No, and it, it, it's a small site. If you look at, in, um, our report, you'll see the aerial, a larger snapshot with the lots. This is about half the width of the, most of the lots that are on eleven mile. Um, it's probably the original lot that was platted, whereas all of those others are combinations of two or three of those.
You currently have thirty-three feet, as far as width.
Also, it doesn't have the addition of the alley. Um, most of the other properties you can see go back, um, because those alleys behind them were vacated, or they're still in use. And you can see that this one, and that, that parking to the back where you see the, the green, that's actually going to be parking for the marijuana provisioning center, because they bought that as part of their property. So I, I would say that, um, Mr. Supriyoni is correct in that he likened it to a residential use, I would say that the lot is much more of the size of the residential lots that are within the general area, rather than the eleven mile district lots, because if it's small width and it's, it's, and it's not as deep.
So even if you were to tear it down, you can't really think of any other business that would be viable there, other than something like an artist studio?
I think, I, I wouldn't say that there would be a, a, there, there, there wouldn't be a viable building that you could put in.
Well, business, like just for the parking, like how?
Yeah.
You have a...
Ideally, that piece of property would be absorbed by the property next door.
Which would have been ideal.
So there's no, I mean... More parking for the marijuana place.
Right.
Yeah.
A drive-through area.
Yeah, there you go.
With the limited thirty-three feet and the setbacks, it's very limited use, and even though it would not be a very, let's just say, pretty home for someone to live in, but I think you'd have a better shot myself if it was full one hundred percent residential and be able to sell it than you would, even with a work in and live in, which I think you're going to have a better shot compared to right now, we've got nothing. I mean, we can't get anybody to have any interest in it at all, and any interest that we've had has been shot down with parking usage spaces. And three parking spaces, what does home particular, this property came with?
Unfortunately, it's not in it, there's no residential allowed in that area, so...
That's even more difficult.
Mm-hmm.
And what they were doing or using it for has lapsed.
Right.
Which puts them back to current standard.
Sure.
Ms. Sarah, you had a question?
So it has three spots.
Correct.
Right?
That's the shiny new looking cement area.
If, like, an attorney had that as the office, their office, three spots would be enough for an, one individual?
Yes.
A, a single accountant.
I think an accountant is another very good, you'd have a shot at that, accountant. I think even, I've had inquiries on the other property that he had for an art studio and an artist. That's even got potential use. If, if we can advertise it differently than currently what it is, it's going to help tremendously, I can just say that.
So is that correct, that three spots would be enough, or?
Three spots, we did calculations for office, and some sort of office use, based on the size of the, it, and it's pegged on the amount of square footage, not the number of people or whatnot, that three spaces would be allowed for an office use, or florist, or a...
Florist is another one, and with the allowed parking on Cummings helps tremendously for a day type of work. Gives you three more spots.
We can't count that.
But I don't know the laws on that.
We're not, we're not allowed to count that.
There we go, I, I don't know that answer, so...
Okay, did anyone else have any questions?
I just want to make a comment. Um, I'm very surprised that, um, you were not able to strike a deal with the marijuana dispensary, because they are in desperate need, uh, in other locations for, uh, parking. And I'm surprised that they did not come, uh, with open arms.
The, um, from what I understood, the offer for the building to Mr. Benat was embarrassing. He didn't give him any leeway at all, any consideration for the property.
You were, you were the realtor, right, or did you not know?
When it originally was sold, he purchased it, I believe, with Hannah, and it was something that was purchased as a land, I think they did together a land contract type thing.
Well, I guess what you...
I wasn't involved.
I guess you were asking, who, who did the provisioning center present the offer to, if you don't know the number, to just...
Well, I think they did a verbal, and they were going to do a verbal, and then if it would have been something they could have agreed upon, I probably would have stepped in and wrote it up, is probably what would have happened. But they couldn't even become, they, they didn't even got to a point where they aren't even in talking terms.
Was he asking an unreasonable amount of money, or is it?
I think it was the other way around, it was an offer of a very unreasonable amount. And, and the home, I mean, the home, the property is updated, I mean, it's, and it's all approved with electrical and plumbing and roof, and, I mean, all but the siding. It's, it's good for twenty years the way it is. So that's the other issue. Now, I don't know that before my time with, and I believe even before your, might have been before your time, too.
Okay, any more questions for, um, Mr. Benat's representative? All right, thank you so much, if we need...
And thanks for your time.
If we need you, we will call you back up. At this point, I will, um, ask if there is anyone from the, uh, public who wishes to speak on this, and I don't believe there's anyone in the audience, so, and we did not get any correspondence from the neighbor, any of the neighbors, so we will close the portion of the public hearing, and I will open it up for discussion, uh, with my fellow board members.
Well, one thing I know, I grew up right down the street from this, and it was Mary Store in the fifties, and and it's been, and she lived in the back with her son. So it's been that type of a usage for sixty-some years, and...
And should I say the layout is a three bedroom? Unfortunately, the layout is, they actually have closets.
It may have been, unfortunately, once it went vacant, you know, it was non-conforming.
Exactly.
Non-conforming. And once it went vacant, they lost their non-conforming status.
The fact that they did not choose to act on it in a reasonable timeframe, has put us, put the petitioner in this position.
Right. I struggle with the fact that there's no plan, like, here's what we're gonna do, or here's what we propose to maybe do.
We don't even know if they will, if they would comply with what we would put the conditions on.
Yeah.
I do remember, at a planning commission meeting, one of the commissioners bringing up the question on the vinyl siding on that building, that, you know, hey, what's going on here? Why is this being allowed? And that's when, I guess, when it all, probably back in two thousand eighteen, when all that was going on.
I'll go to Ms. Sarah, and then you, Mr. Yular.
I'm curious about whether there's any period, once the marijuana business gets up and running, is there any review process for how the, the traffic and parking and, and things like that are going, that where it might make it more palatable for them to purchase this property? Any idea?
I can jump in on that one. So there are plans eventually to do a whole rezoning, or zoning ordinance rewrite. That's gonna take some time. I would put it, you know, in the, the years, or almost years range.
But if there's, I just wonder if there's a, an excess of traffic on this business, would, will there be any kind of review at that point?
So the ordinance lays out the parking requirements, and we, as a staff, and the planning commission, and you all, are bound by those parking requirements, absent a variance. Even if a use moves in and meets the parking requirements, and then there's a parking issue, you know, our hands are kind of tied in terms of what we can require. We could always ask the applicant if they would be willing to make some modifications, but it would be an ask.
Okay. So basically, I'm gonna use the example of the Starbucks on Woodward.
That's a great example, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
They can't do much about the fact that people are sitting on Woodward to get coffee.
Right.
And I frequent there, so I'm not trying to be agitated about it, but um-
So the rewriting of the zone, of the ordinance that you mentioned, what is that gonna rewrite?
So, Berkeley's zoning ordinance has had some updates over the years, but they've been somewhat piecemeal. And there are a lot of provisions, I'm sure you've noticed, that people have come before you here, that are just very outdated, in terms of today's standards, uses, for example, that aren't contemplated, that are coming frequently before the city. We are going to look at the master plan, which was recently updated, what was that, a year, a year and a half ago, a year ago? And we're gonna take the current zoning ordinance, and have the master plan guide us in those updates, working with the planning commission. There are whole sections that need to be written that we don't have, landscape standards, a lot of lighting standards.
Signs.
Signage.
The sign ordinance is-
It's all the things that we keep getting.
That's another thing that has to be addressed as well, and we're gonna take some of these items that come up frequently as issues, and probably do some Band-Aids, before we do the whole rewrite. But, but that rewrite's gonna take a good chunk of time. I mean, we're gonna end up with a brand-new zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Megan. So, for this site in particular, with a new zoning ordinance, if you used on eleven mile, twelve mile, Coolidge, Woodward, an approach where you not only regulated by use, but you regulated by the size of the lot and the type of street, you could see how this particular lot is different than other lots in the area, and then, you would then regulate it so a smaller building, maybe with different uses, would be allowed in that particular spot, whereas it wouldn't be appropriate two doors down, because the lot is wider and deeper. And you're looking for a certain amount of tax base, and those uses would be appropriate there. So, I would say, from my point of view as a planning consultant, this lot shows how the need for a variety of regulation, looking not only at use, but also at street type and site type, and that, the problem of this lot could probably be solved as part of that overall zoning ordinance, but, as Kristen said, that's likely a couple of years away.
Ms. Ward?
Since the petitioner, Mr. Benoit, excuse me, is not here, is there any consideration to perhaps tabling the matter until he is available?
Do we think we change our decision? I don't know, I'm just putting that out there.
I'm just throwing that out, since-
I mean, I agree, there's some-
Yes. Some issues that unfortunately, the gentleman here today is not able to agree to.
Well, typically, our approval is based on some, the petitioner standing up here and saying, I will comply with X, Y, and Z at this time. So it's not as if we say, okay, this is what we want you to comply with, now go talk to them, and then-
I understand.
So that is, that is probably the biggest issue, is typically, we've negotiated deals, we've changed things from ten feet to seven feet.
And then, just so I know, the only real question you currently have is the vinyl siding.
That's not even really truly our consideration, right? That's, that's a code issue.
It's a code issue. It's outstanding. The city has not been able to-
So the city's been trying to get him to change it, and he won't change it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's really-
What's to make us think he's gonna comply with anything else that we, any other?
Well, if it's the only alternative that he currently would have, to be able to change the variance, to be able to get it to sellable, and get a tax base on it, I think he probably would just, because right now, it's costing him money for what he put into it, and taxes that he's currently paying.
So, he is out of the country.
Correct.
When is he back in the country?
And would anything be done on this, between now and then? If, if we approved it, then you would start marketing it, or?
Well, I would change the listing, and it would make a big difference.
Thoughts, questions?
Well, if we did approve it, and just had the stipulation that it had to be brought, brought up to compliance.
I, I guess my concern is, he hasn't done it yet.
Yes.
And I would've thought, in good faith effort, you would have done it, so that when you had something in front of us, we could see that there was some strong desire to do something with it.
Madam Chair, if I may, so, and Megan can correct me if I'm wrong, but the city issues zoning compliance and business licenses for new businesses as they occupy buildings, so that license wouldn't be issued if the siding was not brought into compliance, and a use that was approved by this body was proposed.
Okay. I mean, but it's still in the same position it's in.
Um, it's a, it's a little bit different, in that if they had a use, if they had an artist studio that wanted to move in here, we would not approve the use of the artist studio until the siding was fixed. Right now, we're lacking that, other than citations and things like that. We don't really have that hammer, that catch.
That would force a hand, it is a great, that's my thought, is that they would, I don't know.
I have a couple of questions, I guess.
Sure, Mr. Yular?
So hypothetically, could he come in front of us and ask to have this approved as residential, and try to build a house there?
He would love that.
But, I mean, is there anything stopping him from filling out that application and trying it?
No, you have to give them due process.
All right, and then, what, what happens if we grant the variance, and like, is there anything to stop him from just letting somebody live there?
The city wouldn't issue a C O, the city wouldn't issue a certificate of occupancy-
Without a business there?
Without a business there, because it's not an approved use. So-
So he couldn't rent it, or something like that?
No.
No.
The back part of it?
No.
I mean, my thought is, like, I think if we grant this variance, it's just gonna sit there anyway. I don't think anyone's gonna buy that. I don't, I mean, I, he knows more about it than me, but that just looks like a terrible, terrible little situation.
Especially given the neighbor that's coming in.
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, like, some people might like that.
Yeah, I mean, they might, they might.
The people that work there might wanna live there.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true.
And, and young, I don't, I can think of people who'd wanna live there, probably, but, so my inclination is to just, I think he should be here. I think we should deny it. I don't think we should sit around and revisit this again in two months. And then, if what he really wants to do is try to build a house, I'd be more inclined to entertain that, than, I mean, because that, it's just so, it's so tiny and weirdly shaped. It's like, I, I don't think you're gonna get a CPA or an attorney next to the weed place.
Well, maybe there's-
But that's just me.
Yeah, that could be a-
Yeah.
Good spot.
But so, but a, a house is strictly residential, so yeah, until that zoning, that ordinance, or that the, until the rewrite happens, you're, which, it sounds like that may, this piece might be included in that, where they may allow-
My, my understanding is, he could tear that down next week, and come in here next month with an application to build a house, right?
He'd still need a variance, right?
You need a variance, but he could do it, I mean, he could try.
Well, we could see what that looked like, versus not knowing anything right now.
Yeah.
Well, I think we saw with the previous petitioner, that he and his family went to a great deal of trouble to put in new windows, to replace the rotting wood, to clean the place up. I mean, along the side, between the two buildings, there are weeds that are taller than I am, that he hasn't, there hasn't been any effort to improve the property, and-
That's absolutely wrong. The inside, the interior of this property is brand-new.
Okay.
I mean, full, front to back.
I guess, what she's referring to is the outside of the property, what people see.
Yeah.
There, there's a difference between the inside and the outside. We can't, we do not see the inside either.
Yeah, we don't-
The outside, from what that building was, you know, five, six years ago-
From Mary's Store?
Even though it's vinyl siding, is a whole lot better than what used to be there.
Better than it was, yeah.
You know, it's type siding, I mean, that-
It was a sad building.
Whereas where those parking spots were at, where was the garage that was literally falling down? So he did, he put a lot into that place, so I will give him that.
But, I, I think he could have done more. Now granted, he may have done some interior work with new furnace, air conditioning, flooring, et cetera, but we don't see that. You know, that's not something that we're, that's visible to us, and so we're judging based upon what we can see.
We shouldn't be rewarding the cosmetics, I mean, that's not, I understand what you're saying, Maria, but-
He's not here about the cosmetics.
Yeah. I just, I just have a real problem, given the fact that he's not even here to, I don't wanna say negotiate, but kind of go back and forth and, and talk about, you know, this option and that option, because one of the things we've, we typically talk about is, you know, what is the least intent, you know, what is the least of the variances we can give, and I understand that's not part of this, but it still gives us something to talk about.
Madam Chair, would you entertain a motion?
I will.
I move that we deny PBA dash zero eight dash twenty-two, three nine one zero, eleven mile road, based upon the fact that the petitioner is absent, and that there really isn't a hardship that we can actually see. What do you need?
Can, I was just gonna say, if you can add, I think it's important, given this situation, that we really nail down where it doesn't meet the standards for review, so that we, we cover ourselves.
Okay.
I'm less comfortable about the hardship part. I'd say more, it's, it's, it's kind of the result of his own actions. I mean, he left it there and didn't-
No, I wanna say that-
You know, there's no continual use of the variance, like if he had immediately-
It doesn't meet all the requirements.
Okay.
Acted, it would've continued.
Okay, let me rephrase, that, we'll take out hardship, that the applicant has stated that the parking will not, will not support any of the permitted uses in the current zoning district, that the parcel is very small, and that, again, parking is a major issue. And the facade needs to be in compliance with the requirements of the eleven mile road district, and that it is due to the property owner's choice to keep the building as both a commercial and residential, or work and living situation.
Do you need something a little tighter?
In my opinion, citing the unique properties, cite the unique attributes of the site, such as its size, and the lack of parking, would more be an argument to grant the use variance, rather than to deny. I think that the, I would recommend that the motion be strictly about the latter half-
The choice.
Of what you said, of what board member, board offered, in terms of the choices of the applicant, and then perhaps you could also say that it is possible for uses within the district to be within the building, even with the limited parking.
Okay. Can we then strike the whole issue about parking out of the resolution? And that we will stay with the fact that the property owner has made the decision not to comply with the facade improvements, and with striping the parking area, which needed to be done a number of years ago?
Can I maybe-
Add to it?
Yes. I, I think what we could say is that there are the four standards that must be met in order for us to approve this request, and one of the standards that is not being met is that this is, this need is the result of the property owner's choice, and there are other options for this property that they should be considering. So it does, it, while it meets, we could argue that there, it meets three of the standards, it does not meet the fourth, and we have to, you know, we are required to have, you know, answer yes to all those questions. Does that help?
I second that.
Can I ask what the, I know the facade, the striping-
The facade and the striping really don't have a lot to do with this. Basically, what it is, is one of the criteria we have to meet, is that the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. We are saying that in two thousand and eighteen, had he occupied that building using the use it had, he, this would not be an issue. He, he let that non-conforming use lapse, and now he's coming in front of us trying to get it back, but there are other options that he can do with this property.
Right, but there's my question. What are the options of three parking spaces?
Not, it's, that's really not our, our, we, right, we don't-
Madam Chair, this is the discussion amongst the zoning board of appeals, not with the applicant, so I really recommend that you limit your discussion to the board members and to staff if you recognize them.
Okay, so we've, we've kind of discussed that, and I think it just comes down to the fact that it does not meet all of the standards, specifically that this is the result of a property owner or previous property owner's actions and choices, and therefore that we would deny this request.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Yular.
A roll call, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Wilner?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Yular?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Turner McAlpine?
Yes.
Motion to deny-
The request for a use variance to use the property as a live-work unit.
Motion was denied. My vote is seven to zero.
Okay. Is there any other business that we need to discuss? So obviously, we do have Ms. Sayer here present, who has taken over from Mr. Guzan, and then our two alternates, thank you for serving, are here as well. So, welcome. I will move on next to the staff and the board member report, please. Is there any?
No, I will just introduce myself formally. I'm Kristen Kapalansky. I am the new community development director. I look forward to working with all of you. If you have any questions, email is a great way to reach me, give me a call. I will be happy to discuss any questions that you have. Yes.
No, I was just saying goodbye to our petitioner, representative.
So also included in our packet, I just wanted to highlight, was the May-June, I can't remember what, the community development report as well. So I encourage you to read that. It had a lot of good information and I think that's a great kind of process that you all continue to provide for us. Next up would be Councilman Henley. Is there anything from the, the city council that you would like to share with us?
Yeah, I have a few things. And first, I wanted to also welcome Ms. Kapalansky. I'm really excited to have you onboard. And I thank Megan for her time working for us. She's done a great job.
Your parents are gonna miss seeing you on Monday nights. And we will miss you as well.
Yes.
I'll miss you all.
So a couple of these items we've touched on. Last month, council approved the first two marijuana licenses, one for Loom on Twelve Mile Road, which is just east of the American Legion, and then Quality Roots on Eleven Mile and Cummings, the one right next to this property. And both stated they expect to be open within four to six months. And then in our meeting on Monday, we expect butter provisioning to be up for consideration and there on eleven mile between Berkeley and Henley. Then finally, we touched on it a little bit tonight, the sign ordinance needing a major rewrite. And I had asked earlier, you know, could we do some of these Band-Aids? And staff is already looking into it. So, yeah, well, even though it's going to be, you know, I mentioned, it'll be a while before we can get to a major rewrite, that we can at least try and address some of these issues that keep coming up that, that are an easier fix than the comprehensive rewrite that we eventually need. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? If not, I will officially adjourn our meeting at eight thirty-two. And thank you very much, everyone.